Great, 7 o'clock, and why don't we open up the meeting and have a little pleasure of allegiance?
And we can take a roll call of the members present.
We have on the zoning board, we have myself, Tom McLaughlin, which Cushing?
Present.
Steve, Stephanie Halter is present on the
Present.
Okay, and Pete Julia.
Present.
Okay.
Okay, and on the planning board, John, I'm present. Rebecca?
Here.
Neil?
Neil's unable to attend today.
And so we have Zach.
Here.
Mike Ahern is excused this evening. Phil?
Absent, I guess.
Mark?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
And alternates, Mike?
Present.
And Peter, I guess you're on both boards.
Present.
Great, but you can't vote twice.
Do, is it worth seating anyone? We're not really voting tonight, anyway. It's a discussion, anyway, right?
We should go back to the zoning board. You wanted to do that.
Minutes and thing.
Go do and do our minutes and stuff?
We'll do it at the end.
Oh, okay, good.
Because we got, and then the, that's the plan where members want to leave.
So you're all set, John. You can open that.
Okay.
Discussion, you know, misses.
Do we just kind of shift gears here? Do we have to call the joint meeting to order? Or just kind of, just kind of go with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. Don't ask me.
So, welcome, everyone. So, we're here to touch base and share ideas and gather information between the zoning board and the planning board. And on our agenda is discussion of the zoning ordinance and about the potential for joint meetings, like we're having this evening, but in other contexts as well. And I do have some questions here, but, I mean, I guess we get to start out by kind of asking ourselves and asking the zoning board if there are, in a kind of very general sense, before getting more specific, if there are, you know, things that have come up that warrant discussion, that warrant attention of the planning board, potentially even amendments to the zoning ordinance, or anything that you've seen?
Well, we had one thing was the, it was nice to see that clarification about the, what was it, non-conforming properties and loosen it up that a little bit. And, because we always, we did run into that. It seemed like a burden to, you know, have to have people come in and go through special exception or whatever it was for that. And I don't know, does anybody else have any comments?
Now, I just think the procedure that we follow, people come into the planning board, and then, I feel that it's working pretty well. They come into the planning board, they have an issue, they present it, then they bring it to the zoning board. It gives us time to review it, check things out. I think, I think the system's working very well. I know that there's certain things that applicants aren't happy with, but that's the process. So, but I think the system is working, working very well. I've been on board for a while, and I think it's smooth as it's ever been, so.
We had a big opportunity, too, when, when we approve it, that we could always make, put, not contingencies, but where the, you know
Conditions?
Yeah, conditions on it, and they usually seem, although in some ways we can't really impose those conditions, but something that you folks can on your site plan review. And, you know, so it's, it's, we're not islands out there. I mean, there is, you know, that opportunity with the more controversial projects or the more intricate projects, to be able to give conditions suggested to the planning board to debate. We don't, we don't debate quite as long as you folks do.
We go for a while sometimes.
Pretty, pretty black and white.
And the other thing we were talking about is this new AD, ADU, what is it? I just read it through again, the accessory dwelling units. And, you know, I, that's, that's a complicated few chapters, two paragraphs you've got there. And I don't know how much of it was boilerplate and how much came over. I mean, I don't want to jump ahead. Do you want to talk about that, or?
I don't have anything I want to add to that at this point unless anyone else does.
I can give a little context to what we were looking for as far as convening the two groups, just as we were going through the, just talking about the zoning ordinance for the most recent updates. I know we saw David Kedham came in for, you know, some of the comments, but just knowing, it's helpful to know what hangs up the zoning board in the zoning ordinance, because, you know, a lot of the changes that I think are easy are the administrative ones and the ones that are tripping you up, or if you're always having, if there's always special exceptions or variances being asked for very specific things, then, you know, maybe instead of planning at the zoning board level, it's something that needs to get incorporated more clearly in the, in the zoning ordinance. So, it makes sense to do this once you're right about now, as we
If there are variances being offered.
David Kenson here, too.
Yeah, he just, I was going to point out, he just joined, so.
Okay, welcome, Dave. Yes, you know, more than confusing the zoning board, I mean, I think that the, where the rubber hits the road here is with the enforcement issues, and I'm sorry, I forgot my last, embarrassing, but I did put some highlights, and it's interesting, the qualifications you have here, that the, the dwelling unit doesn't have to be attached anymore. It can be a separate unit, which, of course, does that mean like an RV, that they can hitch up an RV? And then it's also good for caregivers. I, you know, I really like this, and I like the whole movement to use up our current stock, and I love the words that you said, to make it integrate with the neighborhood in the character and the, something of the
Are we talking ADUs or multiple unit dwellings?
I was talking ADUs.
You are?
Yeah, because that's the new one that we got. And it's just, I hope that we've, you know, dealt with the town attorney and that he feels like he has something, I, you know, of a, what a pessimistic question, but, you know, the landlord is, if I have my mother, if I move into my mom's house to take care of her, and the house remains in her name, you know, what if my brothers and sisters want me out of there? I mean, the, I guess the landlord is the landlord, so it'd have to be the mother or the mother's representative that would bring a, you'd have to evict this person, right? Or are they in your house? You know? I mean, it, it's great, and I know we're going to cut our teeth as we move forward on this, but there's, there's kind of a few terms used in here, and some things are really, really pretty open-ended. It's, it's a very inclusive regulation. I mean, if you want to open up the housing, that, that certainly does.
Some of the ADU stuff is in the RSAs, I believe, right? And it's mandated by the state?
Yeah.
Oh, really? So this was all boilerplate you folks got?
I can give a little context. So we were given boilerplate from the state. It was something that was in the RSAs that we had to do, and there was a lot of great information, probably from the Office of Strategic Initiatives or whatever it was called at the time. This was maybe four years ago, I think we put the ADU, maybe three or four years ago. And so we had, the Office of Strategic Initiatives gave us, you know, you can decide this, here's where you can make some decisions that are most appropriate for your town. You could decide whether or not it needs to be owner-occupied. You can decide if it needs to be attached or you allow a detached ADU. So we did make some decisions through that process, but, and we made, you know, we spent a lot of time working on that, just trying to make the decision that made the most sense and was most in the spirit of the RSA, in that it was trying to allow people to age in places as long as possible. So, owner-occupied, I think we set a maximum square footage of, I think it's 1,000 square feet. We decided that attached was not required, but it had to fit within the, all the dimensional requirements, so.
Yes, and be contiguous with the neighborhood near the original, the original building. You know, I had quite an experience with, I don't know what our database is in this town, and everybody, I know you, we all talk about that, the enforcement end, and what are we creating here? And that, you know, that somebody's coming in there, filling out an application for this, and, you know, God knows whether they do a great application or a poor application, but basically you've got an application in front of you. And then we talk about, well, it has to be, it has to be a caregiver. Well, what happens when, you know, the caregiver moves out and the family goes and wants to sell the, the house? And, you know, what kind of documentation? My point being, that Jason from the water and sewer, I was like really impressed, he, he comes out and he takes a picture of this manhole we had to put in, and it's on a GIS map, and he can swipe it when he comes right to that address, pop, that thing pops up. I mean, is, is the town moving to any kind of a database like that that would really give us something rather than, oh, you know, June's got to go look it up and, old application, they didn't write the application well in the first place? I mean, it seems as though that could be the, you know, part of the answer to this whole regulation, the old enforcement thing, you know, is be able to pop this up and go, look at here, you and your mother, see the pictures of the kids in the mirror, and that's what it was for, and not get into a legal argument, well, I've got a mother, too, you know, and
That's a good idea. Yeah, to answer your question, we don't have any effort yet to digitize and move, you know, we have a lot of historical records, you know, file cabinet after file cabinet, box after box, some stuff in the basement that's, you know, very unorganized in some cases in the individual files, so it is a struggle to kind of sort out from kind of the mid-late 80s to today. That's a long time, and, you know, we don't have a great system, except for a paper-based system. We certainly are aware of what water and sewer has. Again, the amount of records, though, in their keep, record-keeping, I'm guessing is less than what we have for site plans and subdivision plans and version number one and two and three, you know, so that's where we have a box of like the Walmart plans, say, or, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot. So, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have a final plan and the notice of decision, and maybe we could have it so on a GIS, you could click on a property, you get the tax card, and you get all that information. That would be something to hope and dream for, you know.
Well, we've got the tax cards come up pretty well, just on the system we have, well
However many parcels we have, it's a lot of, it's potentially a lot of information to try to sort out.
My suggestion was that, I don't know what the software is, what availability it has, and what, and, you know, I know these software, you buy the package, and then you've got trouble after that, because you've got to keep it updated and all the training.
Yeah.
But I wonder if that's something that could move forward with that, this idea, and a limited use. So I know we can't go back to the 80s and pick up our records and get them all digitalized, but maybe in this, in the, how many of these have you given out so far?
The new zoning ordinance?
No, the ADUs.
Um, there's been one the past year, and that's, I think there, I know of at least one more before that, but I don't remember. I'd say no more than three or four. Yeah, it's only been a few.
So, that's going to be wrapping up.
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
And it's not, just to clarify, sorry, it's, it's not, it doesn't have to be caregivers in there, it just has to be owner-occupied in one of the units. Doesn't specify which of the one units.
So, I, I understand that, but it was specific on the caregivers and then the relatives, and, you know, I just think it's just a great idea, I mean, being my age, that it's really considered to make these things easy, and as you said, to, for somebody who doesn't want the caregiver to move into their house, they can do something in the garage or even out in the back a little bit if they have the space. I think that with the nursing homes and all the stuff that goes on, it's really a great idea, so.
So I guess I was interested to know, so we got passed this year, multi-unit dwelling guidelines for special exceptions, and we tried to lay out some pretty specific but also kind of open-ended guidelines, and about, you know, the character of the buildings and structures in the, in the, in the area, and the character of the site development, the site suitability, preservation of natural, cultural, historic, scenic resources, and external impacts and so forth. And I don't know if anybody had a, had a chance to look at those. So we're, you know, we're trying to offer more guidance in how to apply and achieve this. Does this look like a good path forward in general?
Yeah, I thought it was. That's, I read that earlier, and it's, you know, you're trying to, that's a squishy subject in itself, too. That's difficult, and, you know, we've kind of got our hands tied a little bit with the six-unit ceiling on that, and it's
That's another discussion.
Yeah, that's right. It's just, it's just funny that we don't, we have the, the soil slopes has that gradient chart, you know, that, you know, you're required to have this much acreage if you have this, and, you know, this much density if you have these soils, and it kind of opens up or tightens up, and it gives you more units if you have more. I always thought that that was a decent chart.
David on mute, yeah, I think David wants to say something.
Oh, David?
I've got a list of items
I'd like to discuss with the planning board. I don't know what the order is, because I was late getting on with the site that I had. So when, when the opportune time comes up, just let me know.
This might be fine, right, right now?
Okay. The first item I would, I'm just going to list the items, and then maybe we can talk about whichever ones the planning board thinks are relevant. The first, I think, is the affordable housing issue. That's been crippled, in my view, by the conversion of, of single-family homes to college student housing. And we have to keep our school populated, and unless we've got families that can afford to live in the town, our school will not be properly populated. And I think that's, that's a, that's a dilemma. The second is, we ought to have a regulation that deals with a density issue, and by that I mean a per-square-foot for occupancy in a place, so that there's a, and there are limits that are spelled out on this in, in other ordinances, in terms of a one-family house or a two-family house or whatever, rental units. I think we should have, for the health, safety, and welfare of the population, there should be some minimum square footage required for the occupants. The, the third one is a parking issue. We get the parking on lawns thing, it must be driving everybody crazy. It's, it's primarily college student housing, but I think that's an issue. We had a couple of cases this year where landlords came in and wanted additional parking, and the, the way the regulation was written, it wouldn't allow it, and we had to turn it The next one, we had a high-rise applicant who wanted to build a high-rise back on Jim Smith's lot behind the college, and we had to turn it down because our, our regulation certainly does not allow a high-rise building. And I don't know if it should or not, but maybe the planning board wants to look at that in a new cluster zone around the college, overlay district or the like. I think there's a sign problem on the Tenny Mountain Highway. We had a fellow come in with a, a request for a sign on the Tenny Mountain Highway, and the way the regulation was written, we had to turn him down, which I think was appropriate. How many, how do you describe, he says, I have two or three businesses at this one site, and therefore we ought to be able to have more signs. Well, that's not how we saw it, at any rate. Maybe you want to look at that. And lastly, I think the planning board has to look at the issue of nonprofits in the town of Plymouth, and how we plan for the future. Now, I understand that the university pays for the services that it receives, perhaps other nonprofits should be paying for the services that they receive. And while I'm at it and talking about the university, I would say that this year it was announced that there's a million fewer students going to college than there was last year. And a fellow at Harvard wrote an article about three years ago, where he said half of the small colleges in the United States will be out of business in the next 10 years. We can't afford to lose Plymouth State University at Plymouth. That would be devastating to the town. And I think there ought to be some pretty good dialogue with the university about what they're doing to maintain their enrollment, so they don't get converted to a, some other use, other than what it is now. The kids come to town, yeah, they're a pain in the butt, but they do keep the economy of Plymouth running, and I think that's vital to our economy. So those are the issues I, I would discuss if we had an opportunity.
That's great, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, boy, I can really second on a few of those, I mean.
So, affordable housing is something that's on our agenda, I think, this year again, I, I hope. And it's something we started to look at last year, I guess even beyond that as well, but, and we were approaching the topic of multi-unit dwellings above six units, and ultimately it did not happen, and the board made a decision that it didn't seem feasible at this time. But I personally would like to revisit that, and I don't know exactly what that would look like. We were talking about eight or 12. In terms of a larger building, a high-rise, it's going to be a tough one to actually pass.
I think there's the 35-foot height limit.
Yes.
You know, that, we've always talked about this affordable housing, and, you know, when I was a young person in this area, the old people downtown used to say, when you retire, you go and buy a trailer on the Fairgrounds Road. And that had gone on for quite a while, and there's a couple of, you know, half-decent parks out there, I mean, and we just kind of turned our shoulder to that with, what's his name there, the poor guy just passed? He came in with an application for expanding and putting more mobile homes up and right off of the, right at Connor Beach Hill there. And, you know, I'd go down, and my kids down in Dover, and you go buy these big, nice homes, parks, and, you know, I mean, I know we're working that way with Blackies from out by me is coming on with a little, you know, small square-foot duplex. And, but, you know, I think that the mobile homes is something that is in New Hampshire, and there's a lot of space, and, you know, maybe it's something we just, we just don't see the, the growth in those anymore, and I don't know as if that's a good thing. I mean, we, we start to think about multi-using, it's like all the federal housing and the six-unit building clusters, and, you know, that's people, a lot of people up here, especially, they don't want to live on top of each other like that, and, you know, they don't need much, but if they get their little quarter or eighth of an acre, I mean, that's, they've got their own porch and, you know. So anyhow, I'd like to see those mobile homes get a little more included into the affordable housing discussion. The square-foot occupancy, don't we have a state law that says the minimum square-foot occupancy is 650 feet? Okay, true.
I don't know. I, we can check with Scott, his building inspector, and what the building code, because it probably is better suited in that realm, because they would look at the interior of build, of any new structures or something like that.
I may say
I think that's a better place for it, but we could, we can talk to him about that.
I think some of the overcrowding might be an issue of enforcement as much as what's in the ordinance.
Oh, very well, but it's, it's difficult stuff, and, you know, we, we have to start focusing, just like these cars, we're letting neighborhoods get pulled down by having people driving all over the lawns. I mean, you had a parking area, that's what it was, and, you know, and there's the simplest thing, and you know that that's the pattern, that they rented it out to a couple, now the couple all have girlfriends, and, you know, the thing just moves on like that. Before you know it, you've got six and eight cars on the lot, and the neighborhoods are all polite, because you don't want to, you know the owners, you know, and they're not around anymore, they're renting the place out or whatever, and it's, everybody's too polite with the whole situation, I think.
Can we, sorry?
Yeah.
Just getting back to the, the manufact, so I'm just looking at the zoning ordinance now, we have the manufactured housing that's permitted in the ag zone, not in the single-family, multifamily, or civic institutional, but it is special exception in village, commercial, highway, commercial, and ICD. So, and it seems like that fits the definition. Are you guys seeing more, I mean, do you think we need to think about allowing for it? I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense in the single-family or the multifamily residential.
No, definitely. But we have got a lot of ag zone, and, you know, I just think that if there was, these, these ones down south, of course, they're older parks, but, you know, that can bring, I don't think we need, anyhow, 25 to 50 units like that, would, that, that, anything like that would really help our situation for people who want to sell downtown and move out, you know, right in town, right, and stay in the area. I mean, the taxes are nice and low on that, it's not the best deal for the town, as some other proposals have been, but it is kind of affordable. I mean, that's, I think that, from what I've looked up on some tax cards, that living in a mobile home is one of the kind of real back doors to low-cost living in New Hampshire.
I'm not sure where a sort of mobile home park would fit in the zoning ordinance, but as far as, I mean, you have the minimum lot size.
They've got their own regulations for the state, and I, I don't think there's anything that we can adopt that would give, it's just, you know, I, I think it's a question to ask, is why don't we get the applications on that plan, you know?
I mean, I don't know why there aren't more proposals for that, except for the cost of the land, probably, and the site work, and water and sewer, or set well and septic, that's probably as much as anything. Just, I just want to clarify a couple things. The proper term now is manufactured housing, not mobile home.
Yeah.
And we do, by state law, the town is required to allow that type of housing in more than 50% of the land area, which we do, because of the agricultural, it's, you can have any, on any lot in the agricultural zone, you're permitted to have a manufactured housing as a type of housing, which is, you know, brought in on wheels and can be put on a foundation. We certainly have them in town. As you mentioned, there's some manuf, I believe they're manufactured housing subdivisions, where people own the individual lots, but there's a group of them off of Fairgrounds Road, that area. Another style is the manufactured housing park, which is one parcel, it's kind of like a condominium association in a way, and people rent sites within there. So Whopper Will is another one, which I believe now is owned by the residents there, it's a cooperative.
Yeah.
So those, a lot of those through New Hampshire, oh, CDFA, they had a program for a long time, and I think they still are taking a lot of the old parks, and as owners have left those and not taken good care of the utilities and the infrastructure, there's been a push over many years now to get the owners to own that and be a cooperative, and that's what Whopper Will did a number of years ago. I think they had some CDBG money for it, so. So we have that type of housing quite a bit, and we, I feel like we don't prevent it anywhere in town inappropriately, so it's just a matter of wait, but we, again, we often, you know, the town doesn't act as a developer. We create opportunities and restrictions for where you can do things, but there are quite a few opportunities to do variety of types of housing, so I just, I think we meet the state guidance in that. I have never thought this town was at all, you know, we often get questions, can you put in a manufactured home? You know, yes, in, in the right spot, and as long as you meet the setbacks and get a building permit and go through that. The other question is sometimes about a modular home, you know, which is in sections and built differently, and that's treated kind of the same as a regular built house. So, you know, again, I think we, we, you know, we, we need a developer to put up some type of, and the Blackies at, off of the old, off of Fairgrounds Road and Crescent Street, that's what they've done. You know, it is age-restricted, some people can say it's expensive, but that's, you know, it is available, it's not age, not income-dependent, so.
Yeah.
And that's high-density, and that's starting to get built out, and there's a demand for it. They're selling them, is my understanding.
That's, I was just saying that we, I'm glad that we, I think that should be included in the thing.
Yeah.
We tend to think of this, in the past few years, as this workforce housing, you know, as the government swooping down and solving our problem, and, you know, that's, you're, you're talking different people that would want to live in a mobile home park as opposed to, would want to live in a multi-unit building or six-unit clusters.
So, I think the other thing I would just add is the term affordable housing was used, and workforce housing was just used. Those are really specific types of, you know, have some sensitivity to them, so I think it's important that the town just consider housing of all types. You know, we don't You know, we don't say anything anywhere in our ordinances that talks about income eligibility. So whether it's condominiums, like we have at Tenny Mountain, whether it's manufactured housing parks or subdivisions, or, you know, an apartment building that might, you know, we have people getting assistance that are scattered throughout town, I'm sure. You know, the Section 8 housing, that's the affordable kind of piece. And those aren't, those aren't just in apartment buildings, they can be anywhere. They can be right next door to any one of us. So just keep that in mind, and, you know, again, it's not like we are setting up this section of town for this income level. That, you can't do that, you know. I think it's about finding opportunities to have ways for developers to develop things in a more affordable, cost-effective manner, rather than a traditional, you've got to build a road, have two acres or something, that kind of thing. And I, again, I think we do that pretty well. The subdivision regulations need some work to get better road standards and maybe have some flexibility for road widths, that kind of thing. And then the other part that I think is going to be the next most direct way that can happen is the, there's a open space requirements that the Blackies did use to have higher density within their development some years ago. You know, what we have in here, it isn't perfect, and it creates, you know, kind of saving some area as open space. I think we need to work on higher quality of that space, and then having higher density someplace else on a larger lot. And that reduces the amount of utilities, the amount of road, that kind of thing. It has been used a couple times in the past, and whether, it can continue to be, again, we need a developer to come to us. I have had a call from about a parcel, a couple calls, but nothing's come forward, where somebody was looking at, you know, could they do it? You know, to be honest, we have steep slopes, we have some poor soils, we have a lot of wetlands, we have a lot of floodplain, you know. It's tough to develop, it's costly. So how can we find ways to make different opportunities available for a variety of ways?
I guess this kind of brings us back to one of the benefits of having everyone here right now, which is, June, you see applications coming in. And the zoning board also sees applications for variances. And I, so as you were saying, you know, the, we don't act as developers. We take their applications in and look at them. What can we see in terms of demand, what people want to do, based upon applications for variances, based upon applications that you see, June, that maybe we could address in zoning? That we actually see a demand for, that people are trying to do that is, that we're restricting at this point? And maybe sometimes we want to, but like, that, maybe other places we don't. And do we see anything there in applications, or, you know, for your office or the EBA?
Yeah, the applications.
Can I address that?
Yep.
David?
Okay. I think properly enforced, very few variances should be given. It's a special exception, which is relatively not easy, but more flexible in terms of being able to be given, because the criteria is substantially different. And the idea that somebody simply comes down to Town Hall and pick up a variance, that idea should go away. Because if you look at the criteria, and they're enforced, that isn't going to happen.
If I can address that in terms of my own question here, I'm not trying to make variances easier, but I'm wondering if we see application for variances that tell us anything about the desire of developers that maybe we want to be attuned to? And that maybe, we don't want to make the process of getting a variance easier, but maybe some of these people have a real, like, point in what they're trying to develop that we should think about in terms of how we have written our zoning ordinance?
Or if there is a variance that is, you're often granting because it does fit the criteria, that it's a hardship for many developers, and that's maybe something we need to address.
Well, one lousy thing about variances is that sometimes you'll give it to one that you think is real special, exceptional, real, you know, exceptional. And, but it sets a standard, and the one down the street can say, he got it, and I should be able to too. That can be a problem. Dave talked about the signs down Route 25, and that was a little bit of a plague of that sort, that we started giving, allowing some things go in, and they just kind of took off with it, and then it becomes an enforcement nightmare.
I guess we just wonder if maybe some of those variances, I mean, some of those we really do want to restrict, that people are asking for, are there other ones, though, that maybe would be better off? Like, maybe we would do want to, like, set up a process for a special exception there, because there is a need there that could be addressed?
Well, you know, the idea of tightening the variances, loosening the variances, has gone back and forth, the same way budgets go, let's spread all the numbers out, and then let's aggregate them in. And, you know, we may be going into, I don't, I don't think, we haven't given enough variances to say we've been loose with them. I mean, that's, I don't think I've seen, you know, we've seen more in this year than we have in the past four years or so. But, glad, Dave.
What are people looking for? What are people looking for?
Well, I mean, it's, there's, there's different things. We turned down a couple last year, actually, and it was a rather small infumment on infringements on the setback. And, you know, I mean, it could have gone a way or another, but as I said, there's, there's some sentiment. Dave himself, he thinks that these variances should be, you know, that you just don't do them, and that's a variance, and you don't do a variance. And, you know, that, you can make that argument, but the truth is, you get it before four normal people thinking, and if it's, you know, got so much of a, if it's got an appeal to it, we're not an ATM where you just push in the right code, and there it works, and if it doesn't, you're left, you know?
I think there's, past year, there was an application for an addition in a setback area at a commercial business, and then a sign, yeah, adding a second freestanding sign. And that one might be coming around to the planning board, so.
Well, not surprised.
Under the master sign plan, yeah, which is very unclear, as you have to implement it. But that's another.
I think some of the, some of the variances that I've seen is mostly to do with the residential, I mean, the college residential housing. And so that was something that I've seen that would be the most, people come in for a variance, that issues with those, adding a room or doing something. So those are probably the most I've seen.
I remember this application Dave's talking about with the high-rise. And they saw it had a plan. And when you drove down there, though, you kind of got to feel like you were in New York City for a minute, and you pictured this thing was going to be another really high building. And, but the truth is, you know, that we do have to think about the survival of the college. And, you know, these kids are either going to be here, or they're going to be here and here and here. And not kids, the students, I mean. But that, you know, we have to provide housing, and that's a good question as to whether this, you don't want to make a, you know, a zone down right around the college that can accommodate the kind of need. I just was flabbergasted to see these two buildings at Merrill Street and, I mean, you know, that must have brought in some students from the outlying area. I mean, there they are, their own high-rise, I think everybody kind of want to be together.
Well, the university is trying to keep more people on campus for a variety of reasons, including retention of their own students to, for their own survivability. So, yeah.
Good, we should be accommodative to that, I should think. I mean, that's, that's, you wanted to talk about the multifamily, or, yeah, I know you didn't want to, but that is a, that's a good idea, about maybe making a little bit of a zone down there, it might allow something like that. And these, the other thing I thought was, you know, Mike's here from Tenny Mountain, but that, you got, that one of the impediments for any developer is this, the road and the drainage requirements. They're like, you know, and you're asking him to put this all up front. And, you know, as they sell out, it used to be, you know, you did six units, and by the last time they got to the last unit, that was your money. And, but today, I mean, I don't know, you're going to do 12 units, and, you know, you're in on the end of that, and then the road guy is getting all the money, and the drainage people, and this is expensive stuff. And, you know, I wonder as if there isn't some kind of a TIF area or something like that that you could do that could kind of help the developer finance it in a way, that, you know, that's the, that's about it. And up at Tenny Mountain, I mean, jeez, I think that, you know, some of our properties in this town, Tenny, particularly, their values would have been up 30% if there wasn't any road issues up there. That's so sad. And, you know, I don't know as if it wouldn't take the town to go in there and do some eminent domain, and take these roads, and put a big tax on them, and fix the thing up. You know, would we have Lake Placid up at Tenny Mountain, you know?
There's reason to brush up on our subdivision regs to make sure that developers are building their roads to, to town standards.
I know, and that's true, but, and that's the impediment going forward for these guys, is we have got good standards, and we want to see good roads for the town when it goes in. But that doesn't go back and get some of the stuff that we're stuck with, and the neighbors are all stuck with, and the condo boards, you know, it's just like.
At the same time, I would add, the current town-owned roads need a lot of work, too.
They do.
We're working on, yeah.
Rebecca?
I don't mean to change the subject, but I'd like to get, if we could get back to talking about, sorry, some things that I think might be helpful to hear from the zoning board, is in the sort of the area of special exceptions. I think we added the criteria for a special exception for the, was it for a six, multifamily?
Multi-unit dwelling.
Multi-unit dwelling in the village commercial, or one area that needs us, we added some criteria. I don't think we have any other special exceptions that actually have criteria. And I'm wondering if there's anything from the zoning board that you're seeing a lot of asks for the same special exception, that we could prioritize, maybe building some criteria that could help you make those decisions?
I think you got that one with the buildings non-conforming is loosening that up a little bit. That non-conforming buildings don't have to jump through such hoop, so just put a little something out there. That, that helped a lot. I don't know. What would you say, Butch?
I'm trying to think. They all seem to be a little different when they come in. I mean, some of real obvious, maybe a property line here or there, but they're all, all pretty much, I haven't, I don't think I've seen too many of them that are the same.
I guess the question, like, are there a certain criteria that would be helpful to have in place to guide your process in granting special exceptions? Like, like we've done with the multi-unit dwellings?
I don't, I don't know.
We have our criteria for special exceptions we go through, right? Yeah. No, I, I don't know. David, do you have any answer to that?
Well, we had one just a couple months ago. We're dealing with the, the conversion of the bank building to a health center. And there was, there were quite discreet criteria that we had to find provable, one of which was the impact on the neighbors. And that's always an issue in a special exception, when, is the impact on the neighborhood in which the, it is sought.
Actually, so this is the mid-state. This is, might be a good time to talk about, also on our agenda, discussion about joint meetings on applications. Could, yeah, go ahead, June.
I was going to just, I know Peter had his hand up to it earlier, so.
Sorry.
And I had a couple other things, so.
Go ahead.
The subjects both waxed and waned, so I was kind of waiting for it to come back around. But you mentioned the town doesn't play developer. I get it. Has a town ever talked about having some role as economic development? Meaning, I'm not advocating you wear multiple hats, but perhaps part of Joseph's time, or someone else that's part-time, or certain hours in a year in a consultant fund. If you, an economic develop position to literally have a circular, or a mailer, or something that says, hey, developer, we recently updated our zoning regs, and we will extend tax incremental financing, or we now have cluster regulations, or overlay districts that are more suitable, and why not consider Plymouth? You know what I mean? I don't know if there is, if now is the right opportunity. I don't know if we're at that population density. I don't know if our housing market is underhoused, if we're overhoused. I don't know what the case is. I mean, but I'm just asking, has that been considered at any point in time in the town?
I think that that's a big, that's a big cultural leap for municipalities to be, you know, acting so aggressively, so solicitously with developers. I think that the, the attitude's really changing, and everybody's really hearing this affordable, you know, the housing stock. We know we've all got kids that need to buy homes. And, but we're a long ways from the towns being very, very defensive of developer. And that you come in and it is an adversarial situation. And now people like June, and they're really, they've made a great strides in that. But I think that, I don't know, would you, you know what I'm talking about, Butch?
Do you want me to speak to that?
I'd like to add to that. That's, that's the reason why I'm actually here, as an alternate on the planning board, right, to learn and understand what the town has offered for the last couple of years, and where we're going, where we're going with Tenny Mountain, by the way, in case you don't know where I am. We're developers at Tenny Mountain. So I sit here, we go to the late commission development meetings, we go to the Grafton County meetings, we work with the economic development at the state level to understand how all these pieces fit in. We also work with fishing game, because we know our roads are deteriorating up there, and the tarmac's going into the Tenny Mountain stream, so I'm on the PCC board as well. And we're trying to put all this together. I mean, it takes years to do what, what, if we had something that you're offering, it's going to keep changing for large-scale developers like, like myself. So I just wanted to point out, that's, it's a tough mission.
A lot of players.
It's needed, I mean.
A lot of players.
A lot of information, too.
June?
Yeah.
So, I mean, part of my job is, you know, planning and development director, so it does fall under my role, and now with Joseph, we've got more time to, to move towards that. And we are sort of slowly doing that. I mean, that said, in, there's also been an economic development committee that's been pretty much dormant for a variety of reasons for the last year or so. There is a need to kind of get back to that group. But we need to have sort of an economic development plan, you know, there's some things in the master plan. I've got a bunch of notes, you know, but regardless, there's a few things that I feel like are steps towards doing more to help make the town more attractive for investment in a variety of ways. One is better code enforcement, in some key sites in particular, you know, making our, you know, visually having some changes in promoting basic health, safety, and welfare on some sites. And with Scott Whedon as building inspector code enforcement officer, and the support of the select board have been moving ahead on a variety of places in town. They may not be in your, in your exact neighborhood, but we are doing some work without getting into the details. Another piece is our infrastructure, you know, working towards a capital improvement program. We have now the capital improvement program committee that's met twice. Joseph has already put together a spreadsheet to try to get us moving ahead. You know, I think that's, Zach's on the committee, I mean, we, I think we've, in two weeks or so, two meetings we've had, made great strides, actually, already. That will help look at setting priorities for the town for investments in the future. All right? From that, we can then move to better work on grants and getting funding for infrastructure. We could get funding to help support a developer that wanted to do something to help housing if it met an income threshold for community development block grant. That could be infrastructure to help some kind of housing development. You know, I think there's some other ways we present information about the town to help promote. I've been looking at our website, comparing it to other towns, you know, these are things I just do, but I haven't had a chance to sort of formally report, that I think there could be some changes. Some people like our website, you know, those are always sort of, but how we organize things, there's more of a traditional method and software package for that, that many towns, and it's very quick to find information. A lot of people have trouble finding stuff on our website, we hear. So those are some, some, you know, there's many more, but the next step, you know, could be, the town could purchase a, you know, sometimes communities can get EDA money or some other funds and purchase a property and be, build an industrial park, and try, you know, set lots up and rent them out, or build a building, you know. I don't think Plymouth is there yet. You know, where, and part of it, I, you know, we're working more and more with water and sewer to understand their systems and their systems and needs, but you know, ultimately, a lot of what you're going to see for development is dependent on where water and sewer is. So understanding where that is, where are the high, you know, where, what are sites that are not perhaps at their highest and best use? You know, that might, we might see demands for things like storage units, but is that really the highest and best use of a busy, one of our busiest streets in town? You know, that kind of thing. Where we could potentially have, you know, a better, you know, more, more value building and more employment there or something like that, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the explanation. Just in quick summary, what I've been hearing, and I'm new, obviously, to both boards, I'm sort of hearing the wait-and-see or the reactionary approach or premise. And so my question, the intent really was, what is the town doing in a proactive manner, if anything at all? So it sounds like you are doing some things, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
We have done some things, too. Sorry.
Yep.
I'm not used to, I'm not used to asking for permission. We have done some things. I think we allowed for multiple businesses on one lot to allow for greater business development in, in specific lots. I know we tried to, you know, we've talked about density bonuses and allowing for greater density, which I think can help, you know, in certain areas that can help certainly attract different types of businesses. So I think there's things we've talked about, there's things we've been able to do, there's things we've tried to do and have gotten shot down. The, or we've talked about increased the multi-unit dwelling, multi-family dwelling.
Multi-unit dwellings, yeah.
Number of units.
Yes, the number of units allowed. So, yeah. So I feel like we try, in some ways. I think we could obviously do better, but I think, I think we try as well, so.
You know, this, right now, it's so funny. If you could come back to this, in a year from now, this is just a photo shot of us and we're, you know, affordable housing, we'd like to see more stuff come into town. We could be a year from now, sitting here, how are we going to curb these applications? And, you know, we've got so much stuff coming down, we never figured on this. That's what happened. It's happened, you know, I've seen it a couple of three times. And that's how the pendulum swings. Right now, we don't have much interest. It seems like we're too expensive for the developers or whatever. Well, that can all change in 12 months. And we could have, you know, I can remember at one point, I think there was like a thousand units on the board in this town. Two Home Depot and, sounds like I'm smoking something just to talk about it for crying out loud. It really was there. I mean, they were, he was, they were proposing hotels out there and we did, we had Lowe's and Home Depot going in, out across the street. And so, you know, if you don't think, and it's like the weather in New England, if you don't like it, just wait a minute, it can be really be different, so.
Can I add a comment?
Yes, Stephanie?
Sure. So I think affordable housing is really important in our community. I think the one, when you talk to families right now, what families really need is daycare. There's, there's very few childcare providers in our area. And this might just be somewhat of a moment because of the pandemic. But I think families are really struggling to find affordable and just anybody really that's offering childcare.
You think that this one going out on Tenny Mountain's not going to really change?
It's not enough. It's not enough. From what I've heard is they have a waitlist so long that they've stopped taking phone calls.
You know.
Yeah.
Sure.
And that doesn't open until the summer and they're going to be full and they could probably fill two, two of those facilities.
No, I, I mean, I, I hear that and I agree with that. I've been through that. On the other hand, there's not much the planning boards can do. I mean, I think it's available to develop. And we need people who want to do it.
June, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I wonder if anybody has explored, from the planning board's point of view, if someone has an environmentally sensitive business, a junkyard, a gas station, a place where they store chemicals, that you bond that business so that it can be dismantled if it's abandoned. It can be terribly expensive. And no, and no one wants to undertake the task because there's no money to do it. If that kind of business had to, had to be bonded, it would seem to me a safe thing for the town to undertake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that in the RSA's at all? I know it is with gravel pits, that there has to be sort of some sort of reclamation plan. I don't know.
May with junkyards, you know, a formal application, which we haven't had, so I don't know. That's something to think about.
Hey, June, can I ask a question?
Ask John.
Mark?
Yeah, Mr. Kent earlier brought up nonprofits in town and the, I'll say quote-unquote, the issue that they have with not paying taxes. And is that, June, something that we can address?
No.
Do you universally voluntarily?
Excuse me, I did not say they don't pay taxes. I say they don't pay for the services that they receive.
Start, start.
That's quite a bit different from taxes.
But I think we are having the issue of, again, we have a lot of nonprofits in town. We have a, what was a bank turning into doctor's offices on Main Street, which I'm just going to assume there is going to be an application filed. And I, I was just curious if that is something that the planning board can address, but it sounds like it is not, so.
Rebecca?
I think that's more of a select board issue where they would, I mean, I know as a nonprofit employee, I've gotten a letter from a town select board that asked me to start paying taxes for our nonprofit. You know, I think it's a tricky thing, you know, nonprofits do bring certain services to towns. So there is, is a balance there, but, but I'm not sure if that's something the select board deals with.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're definitely talking about it this year. There are areas where we can negotiate, you know, pilot programs with nonprofits, especially in cases where they, you know, use a lot of our services. Coincidentally, this year, we're renegotiating our life services agreement with the university. So that's a, that's a big piece of this, right? It's a tough issue, though. We've also reached out and started some conversations with the legislature because at the end of the day, if New Hampshire's tax base is going to be based on property taxes and the state allows nonprofits to be a hundred percent tax-free on property tax, that puts us in a squeeze, not just our community, but communities all over the state. There are limits on things like non-state-owned education facilities having a limit on how much their nonprofit tax deductible to. If something like that was introduced, it would be greatly helpful for those kinds of situations. But we got to do that through the legislature, it's a much longer process. But we're, it's an active topic on the board.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer Rebecca directly. You asked about the criteria for the special exception. And my point being that when you, the criteria is pretty, it had, we have criteria, but it gets squishy when you go into about the character of the neighborhood. And you have that situation, too. So it's funny, like all your decisions say, well, this is a very logical choice. But when it comes up, you know, you put a five on some value and you put a 10 on some value and that's, that's kind of what it goes like.
And purposely so to some extent, like to allow a certain flexibility.
It is. And that, that little bit of flexibility is actually quite a bit flexibility. So that's kind of what, you know, to hope we spread some.
Does it feel too flexible, or?
Well, it depends. Yes, overall, I feel like it's pretty flexible. I mean, you know, hopefully we don't see black as white. But I mean, you know, planning boards have done that, too. I mean, we're just, sometimes you get it wrong. But, you know, overall, certainly you can't claim we don't do due diligence. Man, we take all the notes and we listen and let everybody speak and, you know, that's, there's. Anyhow, I just wanted to tell you that it does always come down to that, that flexible.
Rebecca?
I guess, so, yeah, my, my, what my point in that question was really just if we can get more guidance for anything that would be helpful for you, you know, I think adding criteria to the zoning is not something, you know, criteria to a special exception is probably not something we're going to get a lot of pushback on. So it'd be something that would be productive in a way that can help you, support you in your decisions through just strengthening the zoning ordinance.
Well, I'm not going to be the chairman next year, but I, I know that the board's very supportive if you want to do any more of these joint meetings. That's not, we used to do them because there was a big rush, believe it or not. There were so many applications, they wanted to get in for the building season, and we would do joint meetings to make it, to, you know, improve their timeframe.
Well, can we actually talk about, unless, June, do you have another comment?
I had a couple of things that I, that haven't, I was waiting to see what you guys brought up, but there was a few things that we had talked about that I just wanted, we don't have to go into great depth, but just things that we get phone calls about weekly now. It seems like, just today, there was another one. I'm looking at a property, I want to know if Plymouth allows short-term rentals. And we've looked into this and the answer is, it's short-term rentals is not a permitted use.
Yet.
That's all I could say. We're waiting for, see what happens with the legislature, some court cases, that kind of thing. We know we have them in town.
Me and Airbnb, sort of.
Yeah, the, something, you know, something that's shorter than just a few day, you know, a rental for a few days.
But we don't enforce the fact that they're not allowed?
We have not taken any enforcement action. Speaking, I'll speak about the enforcement in just a second. Part of it's just limited time mainly, you know. But that is one, and the biggest concern that I have as a planner, you know, thinking about short-term rentals is every time somebody puts their house out there available for weekend or week-long stays, that means somebody's not living there. So it affects the availability of housing, you know, that's not available for a year-long lease. It's taking that off the market for that purpose. So I think that's a, something to consider in addressing the housing need in general. I think that that's something that should be looked at as regulated for a variety of reasons, okay?
Does the municipality have any choice about that if things go like that?
Um, with, you know, it's.
They'll give, they'll give you this form like you got on the, the other, that you can, you have some variance, like the.
ADO.
Yeah.
There may be a way, you know, we could allow it in some cases. But again, anytime somebody's, you can't just say only this, only 10 of them in town because we're, you know, you can't, you can't really do that. So to be determined, there's legislation out there that might force us one way or another to have to deal with this. Along those same lines, kind of campgrounds, we actually don't, our interpretation of the ordinance is we do not permit campgrounds. We've had a couple of people, oh, I want to do more of a newer style campground, like with the tiny houses or cabins with composting toilets and that sort of thing. Is it a campground? Is it a cluster of buildings? You know, but again, it's kind of ties to this, or, you know, we are in a tourism area. But I think that's, you know, the other thing I would say about short-term rentals is, you know, we do, they do pay taxes if somebody owns it, but it is a different type of use. The other one that's come up a little bit is the different types of temporary delivery of some products and services, which brings to mind, like, one example you can think of is a food truck. So they may get a vendor permit and take up a parking space and we get a tiny bit of revenue from that, but they're, they are competing with a restaurant that's paying taxes, you know. And I don't know where the rooms and meals tax goes if it's traveling around. I think that's something that, you know, just in, when you, it kind of relates to the property tax issue. We recently had a call about a mobile medical clinic that somebody has something that's in a van and they want to, I think, we haven't had the conversation yet, but there's understanding and looking at the website for the business. It's a delivery of some basic medical or testing services, like pull in a parking lot and, you know, they're going to be here on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Wednesdays and Fridays in another town or something, you know. And again, that could be a good service, but they don't pay taxes, you know. So how do we gain some kind of revenue from that when you're going to start to see different types of uses now? Everything's so mobile. You know, you can be anywhere. But that has impacts on us, so.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
The hospital that does the testing, though, they don't pay taxes for, you know, like if you look at Spear that does the testing, right? Now, that's different maybe than Rite Aid, but not all of the businesses that are running pay taxes.
But if you have an employee driving the van and their personnel and they're coming from 100 mi, 50 miles away for the day, that's a different, you know, they may not be engaged in the community the same way you guys are, you know.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
It's pretty common, though, in a lot of urban areas.
Yeah. So I'm just saying that we're starting to see these new emerging kinds of delivery of things that we don't, it's kind of like, I don't know how to dress it.
Could it be permitting and fees?
Yeah, we'll, you know, again.
Especially like food trucks. I mean, for many people, they're very desirable. It makes the place kind of hip and like a place to be. At the same time, it takes away from local businesses. So if there's like a permitting fee or something to actually like set up camp for the day.
Yeah. So I think that might be something that, you know, doesn't necessarily go to site plan review or to the zoning board. I mean, we work on the slot with the select boards and collect a good, you know, vendor rate, look at that, charging a lot more for those types of things to gain some, some revenue for it. And another one is setbacks in older neighborhoods. We've had two fires in our single-family zone the last couple of years. One house removed. That house has been gone now for over, well, be almost a year. So that has, will be losing its non-conformity status. So a new house to go in there is going to have to be pushed back 30 feet, which doesn't fit that building line.
We changed that in the demolished housing this year.
Yeah, but I think it was still a time limit for it, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So that might be another area where we can think about. There's another house in town that maybe needs to come down eventually due to damage by fire. So that might be a chase for a special exception, you know, allow building, whether a house was ever there or not, but that's just in line with the other houses on the street in our more dense, single-family zone kind of in town, or anywhere kind of in town, where we have older kind of layout of buildings and lots, so.
How do we wind up with this across from the green roof in there, the new lodge where Alex is moving in? How do we wind up with that building across the way, sitting there for 10 years with a hole in the roof? Is this, is there anything in the ordinance about structures and, I just can't even believe what I mean. You talk about, think about what makes the town look poor and the cars parked all over the roads, all over the yards with the mud, and then a big abandoned buildings. I mean, we've seen this before where a piece, a house is burnt down, the insurance company gets in a fight with them and, you know, the thing's two years. Is there anything that we can address in the ordinances to say that these places should be torn down or the town step in and tear it down?
There are some ways within abandonment of structures and, you know, we, again, we've kind of, because of, you know, Scott Whedon has done an excellent job on this, but he's only one person, he's 25 hours a week, and he's Building Inspector, Code Enforcement and Emergency Management. So we did talk the other day, he does maybe a third of that 25 hours on code enforcement, you know, but it's always variable because like, I think he got six building permits applications on Monday, you know, it's that season. So and the level of enforcement sometimes is just a phone call or driving by. He's excellent at just dropping in and having conversations to gain compliance and being eyes and ears because he's out and about so much. Other times, it's been a very long, detailed, expensive, dedicated process that, you know, may eventually end in court. So, you know, we can only do a few of those at a time.
That building I'm speaking of, is that, is that?
I'll ask him about it. We'll have to talk about it.
Okay. And then it was, I was so disappointed to see the college bought the old McDonald's lot and uses it as parking. It's like, that, you know.
I don't think they bought it.
Well, I don't know what, but that's, those two lots together are really a piece of property with a view of the highway and all. And they were primal, you know, real estate before 25 started getting developed. And it's just sad to see that. And so you don't think they bought it, that'd be good to hear. But I don't, not totally.
Yes, David?
It would seem, a few years ago, we took a run at having a inspection system for rental property. And it seemed to me that there ought to be a regulation requiring rental property, whether it's short-term or long-term, whatever it is, to have to regularly get a certificate of occupancy, that it's been inspected and meets certain safety standards. What prompted that attempt at legislation was a terrible fire that they had in Portland, which killed a whole bunch of students that were crammed into a building. We ought to be able to have our, our code enforcement officer inspect property that's used for rental purposes, at least for the basic safety accommodations that are required. And if short-term rental came along, that, that should also have to comply. It's not fair that somebody runs a motel and gets inspected, but somebody just rents out their house and there's no inspection whatsoever. I know in other cities like Manchester and Nashville, they have such a thing.
have, is that you can require it to register?
That's what some communities do, yeah.
And that, that, okay. Well, I just hope we're out in front of that, because I think that can just ruin neighborhoods, short-term rentals. And I don't know what there, can we have requirements for them if they're required to register? So if I want to rent out my condo, condo association doesn't have anything, and I say I want to put it on Airbnb, that do I just come down and fill out a form or what do I do? Do I have to give them much information? You know, we got to register with the room and meals tax, right? That's one place you catch them.
Some communities have also tried owner occupancy laws, where you can only do it for a certain number of months out of the year, or you have to also live on the property and other things like that, to another.
I think some of the student housing in the summers is doing it already.
Yeah.
I think some of them are already doing it.
Okay. Should I go and close out my meeting?
Wait, actually, I, I do want to talk before we end. Item B there. This has only been A. Hopefully, item B is not quite as lengthy. Discussion about joint meetings on applications. And, for example, recently, we, the mid-state application came before the planning board, and we had a lot of questions. And it was questions about the fact-finding, it was questions about the conditions and what ex, how exactly they should be interpreted, and not everybody was on the same page in the room. And I, I think there were several times, several of us were like wishing somebody from the zoning board would have the meeting, or, I mean, it could in fact be a joint meeting, which would also probably be a more prolonged process, and maybe, I'm not sure how feasible that is. There is potential of having a representative of the zoning board at the planning board meeting to kind of clarify. We do have a joint member at this point, Peter. And anyway, so I'm curious to hear feedback about, I mean, it's not always an issue, but it, it sometimes is an issue that we are looking for that clarification when different people are reading the outcome differently.
Well, that's too bad, because we're, we try to do such detail that you.
No, and I've, I've no doubt you did.
Well, I, I was not there, I'm sorry, I just went through the minutes and that, you know, that it's extensive, but I can understand how that would be like that. And I don't know, how would, how would anybody answer that question if they, that you can hang on to Peter there? And I answer.
I think we have to recognize that the ZBA is a quasi-judicial board and therefore
makes decision based on facts that it finds. I wouldn't want to sit on the planning board and represent what I thought the ZBA would find as a fact, because there's four other people who may have a different mind on that. It's a, it's a different function. Board functions for totally different purposes, in my view, anyway.
Yeah, I agree with David on that.
Yeah.
We do have discussions on all of them. We do have.
I mean, would it be helpful for one of us to sit in on the meeting or just review the, the tape before our meeting? I mean, I don't know. Rebecca?
I guess I'm just wondering, because I wasn't at the last public hearing for the planning board. Was there questions within the special exception from the ZBA? Is that?
Yes, and there were questions about the number of employees and, and what was represented at one meeting versus the other, and how that impacted parking and several other issues.
I've never, I mean, I don't think I've ever experienced that as a planning board member, having lack of clarity coming from the ZBA.
I don't know if anybody else was, who was there wants to speak to that.
I felt like maybe that was as much about the applicant as about the zoning board?
Well, yeah, it, it, I think it was. But there's also the question of, you know, is it a he said, she said moment?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I ultimately trust the zoning board, I guess.
Yeah, I think maybe if.
And they made the ruling.
If we, did we have the minute? I mean, I was alternate that night, sitting in the audience. Did we have the minutes of the zoning board available to us to reference?
I assume that, I don't know if they were approved at that point or not, but.
Because they're probably still in draft format right now.
Draft. We've referenced them a few times. I mean, I was pulling them up when some things.
Yeah, again, like I wasn't in the same normal situation of having all handouts.
The list of criteria for the special, the conditions of the special exception.
I think a lot of confusion.
There are two separate lots, one of the single application.
Yes.
That created some difficulty for me in, in that regard, because if you grant permission and then they sell the other lot, what happens next?
Susan?
I think a lot of confusion with some of the feedback I got from other people as well, was the fact that there were a lot of things on there that were not required as the special exception, i.e. the park, the, the way the traffic flows from ladders next door, was that going to be, that got brought into it, then a drainage issue got brought into it. There were a lot of factors that got brought in that people were like, why, why? So I think, I think that was it. I think what came from the zoning board, I felt was pretty clear, what they determined. I just thought it was everything else that kind of muddied the waters and made it, it made it long drawn out.
What I can say is there, here again, just like the budgets and just like the tightening down variances, it's just something that goes like this. You know, usually, sometimes you just go, everybody goes, oh, okay, you've got it, you know, boom, 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 boom. And then people go, well, we should have more detail. This one I see has got a lot of detail, a lot of condition, and that's fine, but, you know, sometimes more confuses things. And, you know, it's, it just is the way it goes.
I don't think, I don't think there's any question that you did due diligence.
No, I, I get it, yeah.
There was, like, for example, like, there was a question about the number of employees.
I see that.
And it seems like a different number was represented at the different meetings.
That's very possible.
And that would impact the decisions that were made about the conditions that then we inherited to bring into the site plan review.
You got June's actually this interface, right? Did she, did you, did you, you perceived there was two different numbers applied for?
Yes.
And called it out in the meeting, yes.
I don't know what to say about that.
Different than what was in the application that was presented to the planning board, that was then discussed as a number went up.
And maybe that's just in the planning board to push back at that.
And the issue about the traffic around, coming around by ladders was that they showed us an existing conditions plan and a future plan that did not show that traffic coming on to that site. So that's why that was brought up, and they should have, they did not show us what the existing and future conditions are in the site. And same thing with the drainage. There was questions about what, at least the initial plan did not show the existing conditions and the adequacy of the drainage. They did correct that, but the traffic, you know, it's, it's just not, it's not shown to what it is, so, or what it's going to be, so, anyway, that's water under the bridge at this point, so.
You know, the biggest weight the conditions have is that, that the further monitoring going down. So that's another reason for the ebb and flow, is that, you know, at some point, somebody goes, well, who's going to monitor this? You know, who's going to count these cars and who's going to, and, you know, that's, gets all into the paying the cost for the town where building regulations did. It was good, I mean, about the idea about, you know, registering every apartment and, you know, having an occupancy certificate and offered issued every year, but point, that's like, that's, talk about Scott Whedon, the town's barely bellied up for his 25 hours a week here, that you're talking much more than that just to maintain that kind of a process. And, you know, you got to look at where the political will is in the town, and, so.
I guess this is not often, oh, Stephanie, go ahead, yeah.
I think you have to make that pay for itself, right? So, you know, whatever the occupancy permit fees were, you would have to make it pay for the extra amount of time that are required to implement that kind of program.
I guess what I was just wondering then, I mean, it would be difficult and it would prolong the process to have a reviewed set of minutes available prior to the planning board meeting. And I, I mean, I understand, like, the idea of having like a rep at the planning board meeting, it, it would be, I understand the problem there. I guess you had the draft minutes, I guess as a planning board member, having access to that, and I guess it's not normally an issue, but that might be, having some of those details might have been helpful.
Yeah. And you don't meet until the Thursday, the fourth Thursday, right? Where I was the first Tuesday.
First and third Thursday.
Oh, you're the first and third?
Yeah.
Twice a month, you hard-earned.
About your application, because some of the numbers. We talked about where the number of staff that they were going to have, and you could look at the application that they gave us, because that wasn't just in our minutes, right? That could be in their application.
Yeah, this seems to me, I mean, again, I wasn't there, but this does seem to me like a very outlier case. I mean, not, not once have we had this, in my seven-something years, seen this kind of, I mean, maybe there's details there that we weren't catching, that's, you know, entirely possible, but, but I don't think we've ever had to think about it as far as not understanding exactly what the ZBA was saying or different, difference between the applications, so.
Yes, Peter?
Does the application process imply or ask for a pre-application meeting with yourself, June, so that you can counsel an applicant? And are developers or applicants utilizing that service?
We do allow for a pre-application meeting, you know, staff does often do that, and we did with mid-state.
Okay.
But the detail we got was not, was much more when it came to the zoning board, you know, and actual applications filed.
Sure, they probably weren't ready.
But, yeah.
It seems to me, under this discussion point B, joint meetings for an applicant is really just a time-saving, so they can hear from both boards at one time. But there's clearly a time restriction. In other words, if they're in with you for pre-application, you say, listen, a joint application is possible, but we're not going to open your case, view your case and approve your case in one meeting. It's still going to take time, the iterative time, but you could have the benefit of both boards as opposed to just one member trying to speak for all at that joint application or joint meeting. Perhaps that is an option that you explain during a pre-application to inform a uninformed or inexperienced applicant first time in a process.
When we met, we clearly laid out deadlines and meeting schedules and gave guidance about which board, you know, the steps along the way. And I can't say that it, they did what they did, so.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, again, I'm, I'm not.
And they actually applied for the zoning, they came in with the zoning board application and we were told this is for the planning board. I'm like, no, this is not.
Rebecca?
I was just going to say, we've, we've really transitioned as a planning board from, you know, just accepting an application as complete and approving it in one night to just giving us a little more time to make sure we're reviewing the engineer report and stuff like that. And so that just, that flexes the schedule enough that it gives time for a zoning board meeting if it's necessary in between those two public hearings. So from the, the third Thursday of one month to the third Thursday, there's, there's usually time in between those two, so hopefully that helps, or has been helping.
Right.
All right. Shall we move on and get the ZBA out of here here? We can do that.
It's the planning board, then.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pass the joint meeting and go to the ZBA. And we want to review our minutes. Did anybody take a review of the, look over the minutes much first? We just talked about it. Is that how, everything? Is David still there?
It looks that way.
I'm here, Tom.
Yep.
I found a problem where there was a motion that was seconded, but it never said who made the motion.
Okay.
Which one was it, David? Do you remember?
I think we only did one motion, didn't we?
Look.
It was a split on a page, and at the bottom of the page, or top of the page, I'm sorry, I don't have it where I can see it. I think it had to do with the conditions of the findings of fact, one of the two.
Oh, I see.
All voted in favor of accepting the findings of fact. Hammond, Rowan read back these findings, effect to the board. Kent motioned to accept the findings, it was just seconded by Halter, but it's not that one.
So it must be the overall decision.
Halter moved to approve the special exception with the finding for, with the following four conditions. Julia seconded the motion and all members voted in favor. So David, I think it's just split. So, because it has the conditions, right? It says Halter moved to approve the special exception, and then 1, 2, 3, 4, Julia seconded the motion, all members voted in favor. So it's just not together with where they say.
Well, if something's seconded, somebody should have made a motion.
Oh.
That's, I guess that's my.
Oh, Halter moved.
Motion is up, up above. It says, in light of these findings, Halter moved to approve the special exception with the following four conditions, 1, 2, 3, 4, and they're listed. And then at the bottom of those conditions, it's split, it is on the next page, says Julia seconded the motion and all members voted in favor.
Oh.
So I think it's there, I just think it's split between the two pages.
That's fine.
Dave, do you all set up for that?
I'm fine.
Okay, so entertain a motion, approve the minutes.
So moved.
And seconded? Dave? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's, all the motion minutes are approved. And the only other thing we've got here, any other unfinished business? Nope, nope. Okay, so we want to, we got an election of offices? Any nominations for, all we got is the chair, the vice chair. Any nominations?
Dave? Dave is chairman.
You nominate, Dave? I'll second that. Anybody else? All those in favor? David, chairman? You've taken that, Dave, or what?
I would only say to the board, the same thing I wrote you, Tom. Some, I, I read things pretty carefully, and sometimes I have to object to things. And I'm not sure it's good for the chairman to be someone who objects to parts of the application or the like, because I wonder if people think they're getting a fair hearing. I'm willing to do the job if the board wants me to do the job. It's entirely up to the board.
I don't have a problem with that.
He's going to be objected, so you want to stick with your nomination to him. Okay, well, you're going to be an objective, that, that, great. All those in favor? And Dave is chairman?
Aye.
Thank you, David.
All right.
Okay, and what about a vice chairman?
What do you think, Butch?
Stephanie?
Stephanie, you interested in doing that?
Sure, I can do that.
You get to put VP after your name.
Butch, you're not interested.
Good for you.
You did such a good job, Butch.
Oh, yeah, right.
You did.
Okay, I didn't miss it.
Take my turn on that.